Call this meeting January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen to order. Regular session, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by John Cale.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Sheriff Mornikie.
It's Bowar heads. Lord, tonight's the beginning of a new year for this fine city of Atwater. We've got some leaders now that are taking the helm that are wanting to use you for direction. Lord, give our city leaders the wisdom and the guidance to do what's good for this city. Give them the strength to endure the jabs. Lord, also, this prayer is for the citizens of this city. When we have a citizen that wants to come up, have them do some good stuff for this city and not use personal agenda to it to bring this in. Lord, we've got a lot of great things going on in this city, and I sure praise you in every single day for what I do at the sheriff's office and the leadership that you've given me. Please extend that leadership here to this fine city of Atwater. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ambrose?
Here.
Cale?
Here.
Raymond, absent.
Miera?
Here.
Creighton, here. Subsequent need items. The city clerk shall announce that any requests for items requiring immediate action subsequent to the posting of the agenda, subsequent need items requiring two-thirds vote of members of the city council present at the meeting. Approval of agenda as posted or as recommended. This is the time for the city council to remove any item on the agenda or to change the order of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to change or move forward? Seeing none? Okay, can we add a motion on that, please? Ambrose?
Do you have a motion to move forward?
Yes.
Second.
Cale?
Yes.
Miera?
Yes.
Creighton, yes. Motion approved. Ceremonial matters. In memory of Greg McDaniel. Pinky, Chris, I'm gonna come out here and join you guys. Yeah, the microphone right there. we're doing a presentation in memory of Greg McDaniel. And I think it's important that I read this out loud to everybody in the community to know what he did. It's been said that Greg was one of the most involved volunteer citizens in the history of Atwater. He believed in the power of community action and maintaining the well-being of our city. He believed that every child and adult should be given the same opportunities to participate in community programs and events, no matter their socioeconomic status. That is the way he based his life on. You know, Greg, he volunteered everything. Atwater Youth Baseball, youth football, Central Valley Football, Cal Football League, famous for the football announcers at the Atwater High School Stadium, and the Parks and Rec Committee, Citizen Advisory Committee, and this thing keeps going on and on, the Atwater Chamber of Commerce, the Fall Festival Director, Christmas Parade, he was Santa for years and made everybody smile all the time he came down Main Street. And the Fourth of July Committee is probably one of his biggest achievements. Today, it's bigger than anything around us because of Greg, because of what you guys did. And then Atwater Historical Society also is past president and member, and he's got us a fence out there and cleaned the whole place up. So, Pinky and Chris, I want to give you guys a certificate of the happiness city. Thank you very much for everything you guys did and thank. (Applause). He's truly loved here in this community, and I've been with him many, many times. He gave a lot of advice to me when I got into politics, and the main thing he said to focus on is just do the right thing for the city and the people. And as long as we stay true to that, we're gonna be okay. So, thank you guys both for coming. Presentations. Literacy Coalition of Merced County, Evaluating Our Community. Dr. Steve Teigen, I'm all tongue-tied now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. We really want to thank you for the invitation to come tonight to talk to you about what we really consider an effort to elevate the entire community of Merced County. Just a short introduction, I'm Steve Teigen, county superintendent, was elected in June, thank goodness, didn't have to go through it in November. And part of the work that we were doing last year prior to the election was to try to focus on the fact that our community, our county, is challenged with lack of employment, and that is directly correlated to literacy rates and graduation rates in our county. While we're making progress with current graduation rates with high school seniors, we have an overabundance of adults that failed to graduate from high school, that struggle with literacy today, and that was one of the reasons why a group of folks came to the county and said, "Steve, you gotta do something." That group of people is here with us tonight, Susan Walsh, Hub Walsh, and Steve Cassidy. They're members of the Walsh-Cassidy-Walsh Consulting Group, and together, we outlined a program to address the issue of literacy in Merced County. We began by convening a group of folks in April of last year to focus on what the issues are. We brought in four keynoters, a pediatrician from Merced, a retired bookseller, teacher from South Valley, a representative from Amazon via Skype, he joined us, and a representative from Apple Corporation. And, of course, the doctor talked about the health challenges to families and children who have low levels of literacy and low employment. The teacher talked about what it means for a child to come to school unprepared to learn to read. The two companies talked about what they're looking for in a population when they want to locate a large center there. And so, our group of eighty or so folks who convened, slide two, I'm not sure where the slide, there we go, slide two, that when we convened in April, those eighty community members got together and came up with five principles that they believed we should work on in terms of a compact. If I can have the next slide, oh, there we go, thank you. So, the literacy compact was developed out of the meeting in April, and the literacy compact has five essential principles in it. I'm not gonna read all of them to you as we go through, but essentially, it's an agreement that schools can't do it alone. If this were simply a curriculum problem or an instructional problem at school, it would've been solved thirty or forty years ago when teaching became based more on research than on seat of the pants. Unfortunately, we know in education that it really is a community-wide effort, it's a cultural belief system that has to exist at home, as well as hard work of teachers and schools. But we believe that together we can raise these literacy rates in Merced County and improve employment outcomes for our communities by focusing on these five things in our compact. The first one is family and community engagement. Recognizing that literacy really starts at home, with a belief that literacy is important, and knowing how to read and knowing how to do math will get you ahead in life. That starts with a cultural perspective at home. We need community partners to support that idea, whether they're members of city councils, leaders in our local businesses, people who work at our schools. We have to work together with our families and our communities to make sure that parents of very young children know how important they are in the role of teaching at home. To that end, our office, the Merced County Office of Education, runs Parent Leadership Training Institutes. We've been doing this for about four years now. We've branched out this year into communities besides just at our office in Merced. We've got two groups going in Los Banes this year. We'd be happy to bring them to other communities, but it focuses on the role of a parent in encouraging and supporting their child throughout their school years. So, that's a start for us. Uh-oh, what button? Oh, there we go. Next button. Next button is access to resources. One of the things that stuns me is the research that identifies that about sixty percent of children at home do not have reading material with which they can engage at their own reading level. Parents aren't bringing home books, they're not bringing home comic books, and believe it or not, comic books are one of the best ways to early literacy because the reading level approach is from pre-k, from second grade through eleventh grade. And there's nothing more exciting to kids than reading about superheroes and seeing the pictures. So, I encourage wherever I go, people to invest in their grandkids' comic book collections. It really motivates reading. But really, what we need to do is make sure that access to resources exists throughout our county. And to that end, we've worked on our little library effort. We want to thank you for allowing us to install a little library this afternoon here at the Atwater City Facility. And I believe Susan Walsh and Hub delivered the library today, and it's a bookshelf out in the lobby that has many books that are applicable to kids, grades preschool through grade six. So, please take a look at that and encourage parents when they visit City Hall to pick up a book. Now, they're intended to be free lending libraries, and that they finish a book and they bring it back, but if they just emptied the bookshelves, that's okay too. That means they loved that book and it stayed at home, and they're reading it again and again. So, access to resources is critical. And so, we have thirteen little libraries now planted around Merced County. They look like big birdhouses, they're watertight, and they're stocked with books from the County Office of Education. We receive donations from throughout the county to put books in those little libraries, and we have plans for another fifty to be installed this year. They're being built by ROP classes at Livingston High School, and so, we're excited that we have kids at every level engaged in this effort. School readiness is the next foundation. I've already talked about that a little bit, but we really need to make sure that we create opportunities for kids to understand the importance of story. And if a parent can't read, a parent can still tell their child stories. You know, that is one of the key ingredients for being a good reader, having the story playing in your head like a movie. And that happens when children are talked to regularly and told stories, and asked to repeat the story or repeat parts of the story, or tell their parents what they think about the story. It's a really, really important pre-reading skill I want to encourage parents to engage in. Another one of the pillars of our compact is workplace preparation and adult literacy. Something that Susan and Hub and Steve are working on right now is a workplace literacy certificate with leaders in the business community around Merced County. I think the next meeting is planned for January the twenty-ninth. And essentially, what we're trying to do is pull together a curriculum that can be inserted in high schools so that kids leave high school really understanding of what it means to commit to work, to be persistent, to be on time, to be committed to their employer. And while we might all think, take those things for granted because we're all of a certain age in this room, I can tell you that a lot of kids come to us in junior high and high school who really haven't built those habits yet in their schools, and so, we need to focus on that in school too, and be partners with our business community in preparing the next generation workforce with a set of what some folks call soft skills so that they come to work and are effective with their colleagues. The other thing that we're doing and taking this seriously at the County Office of Education is we've opened a new charter school. It's called the Comeback Charter, and it's targeted specifically at out-of-school adults ages eighteen and above. It's an independent study program that allows people to come to school once a week and earn the credits they need to get that high school diploma. A lot of adults have realized they get into that job and there's this glass ceiling they can't get above because they don't have their high school diploma. And so, we are actually playing copycat of a highly successful program in Stanislaw County where they targeted this group of adults, twenty and older really, who want to get that high school diploma but can't quit their job and go back to adult school. Many times, adult school is run during the regular school day, and so, adults that are working can't access that. So, we've opened a charter school right here in Atwater at the Atwater Valley Community School, and that is serving right now about twenty-five out-of-school adults that are both doing some job training and finishing their high school diploma. We've already had four completers this year, so kudos to the folks that are doing that great work. The last point is the idea of lifetime literacy, that we can't be satisfied with what we've learned through twelfth grade and high school. We have to help kids understand today that they have to become lifetime learners. I'm sure you all learned that lesson, you had somebody teach you. I had a good fortune of a father that was a lifetime learner, and we have to model that with our families at all times. So, it's another one of the components that, sorry, we believe is going to come out of our little libraries is that eventually, excuse me, still getting over my New Year's sinus infection. So, we're hoping that the little libraries will grow to also include adult books that are appropriate for adult readers and engage them in thinking as well. So, we're looking forward to working with the entire county of Merced. We're asking you tonight for a very simple thing, to sign on as a council, pass a resolution to be a community partner with the literacy, it won't cost you a dime. I missed the opportunity last month when Merced City Council asked, "What can we do? What are you asking for?" And I said, "We just want you to sign on." And Susan said, "Steve, you didn't ask them for money afterward." But we're not asking for money. We really just want your endorsement so that when people come to us from outside and they talk to us about our literacy movement, we can say, "It's not just the schools, it's every city council in our county, it's every chamber in our county, it's every organized club in the county that is supporting this literacy movement in Merced County to better elevate the economy and the lives of our people." I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions in the council? Cindy?
I think what you're doing is wonderful, the little libraries, and I did see the books as I came in. Where could someone go, or what is a drop-off point to take donations of books, or how are you stocking the little libraries? Are they only new, used? What's your criteria for that?
Well, so, what we're doing, and book sorting is a big challenge, but we actually have warehouse space at the county office, so you can drop your books off in Merced on Thirteenth Street, six thirty-two Thirteenth Street, and we have an area in the back of the county office complex there where we store books, sort them, and get them ready to take out to the little libraries across the county.
And you're focusing preschool through sixth grade?
Through sixth grade. Primarily in these little libraries, although...
All new books, new and used, if they're appropriate?
Used in good shape. You know, they don't have to be new. Gently used books.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, great.
There are a lot of grandparents out there that probably have books that they read to their grandkids, and now they're sitting on the shelf and they don't know what to do with them. It's a great way to recycle them and put them in kids' hands and make them useful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr.
Mayor. And then, we'll get that resolution to you, and I think that Lori's gonna add a little piece of carpet over there the kids can sit and read while they're waiting in line, or Susan's gonna do that.
Yeah, she's gonna give us...
Thank you very much.
Very excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
And my apologies for leaving early.
Month's verbal report by District Three Supervisor McDaniel.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Councilman Cale, Councilman Ambrose, welcome. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm here to report, our first meeting will be tomorrow for the year, for this year. And I'd also like to say that in the meantime, leading up to this, I've had the pleasure of being at the table with our new governor in two separate meetings, and in those meetings, he is committed to the Central Valley as far as economic development and water issues. He is very clear on that, and I can see in replication of one of his commitments, he just appointed a very good friend of Merced County, a good friend of mine, Lenny Mendonka, who is the head of Economic Development and GoBiz, which is out of the governor's office, which has their hand on economic development. So, if anybody would, you know, if we're working in that way, if you'd like for me to set up anything, I would love to facilitate that. Also, being on our first meeting, we had last week all of our swearing ends. There's quite a few of them there at the county, from the sheriff to the DA. I think the sheriff is still here. They are well-attended, and going forward, is there any other questions? I don't have a whole lot to share since it's beginning of the year.
Members of the council, you guys have anything for supervisor? You're getting off lucky tonight, and so is everybody else.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments from the public. Notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however it is not required. Action will not be taken on an agenda item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it would be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the item is read for consideration. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Oops. Mr. Mayor?
Can you run the timer? I think that shot clock is temporarily malfunctioning on us, so...
No worries.
We're gonna work on that. We'll make it.
We'll be good. Once again, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and to all the citizens, it's a pleasure to have served the city of Atwater and the citizens of Atwater for the last four years. The first two I served, I was appointed to the newly-formed CDRC, and because of its new formation, there was staggered terms that were given, and contrary to what was stated during the campaign season, I was only given a two-year term, and I fulfilled that term with honor and pleasure, and then, at the end of it, decided to run for Atwater City Clerk, and was elected in November, sworn in in December, and have happily served the council and the citizens of this great city. I am resigning effective immediately, and I am resigning to pursue a business opportunity that has afforded me, and I would be a fool not to. In this position, I have learned a lot of things. Some things I am thrilled to know, other things I wish I didn't. Respect and disrespect seem to come from the knowledge that a person gains as they walk through life. I wish to thank all of the citizens who elected me. I told you I would do my best for you, and I have. To the friends and family that have supported me the last two years for sure, and the last four, not only do I thank you for your support, but I love and cherish each and every one of you. And lastly, to the honest and hard-working employees that are here in Atwater, this position has afforded me the opportunity to work very closely with many of the staff members, and I want to say to each of them, and I recognize they're not all here tonight, but to those who might hear of this, I wish to say to you how much I value the relationships that have been built over the last four years, and I appreciate everything that the staff of this city do. They're underpaid, overworked, and yet, they continue to get the job done. I have given my best, and I love this city. I have three young children that live in this city, and I hope that it will always be a place where we can be, look upon it proudly and with safety. I, like I said, have done my best, and I will continue to pray and hope for the best for all of you as you do your best to do your jobs. Once again, God bless you, and God bless the citizens of the city. And permission to approach the dais.
Thank you, Doc.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Richard Johnson, sixteen seventy-five Drakey Avenue. You know, Atwater is unlike any city that I have ever been in, me or my wife. For people here to run the city, me and my wife, we pay taxes, we raised our four great kids here, and for a city like this to be so cruel to us, forcing us to go without running water, my wife is sick right now, we have no running water still. I'd like you just to imagine what it takes every single day to get water to flush our toilet. We use rainwater from my roof to fill a tote to flush our toilet, dirty water. I gotta walk down the road several blocks, sometimes a block and a half, to get water from neighbors that allow us to get water anytime we need, for my wife to be able to clean the floors, do dishes. I'm constantly carrying five-gallon buckets of water in each hand. It's a constant job, and it's very cruel what you guys are doing to us. I got a question for Public Works in La Quintera.
You need a drink up here, sir.
Okay, I got a question for Public Works in La Quintera about the, since I've been here, we've been here fourteen years ago. We bought this house two thousand and five, after we sold our house in Modesto. We have never had to go without water, trust me on that. I've never not paid my water bills. Four years ago, we didn't even get a water bill for eight thousand dollars from Petro and from La Quintera. Lori Waterman knows this. Back then, she was on our side, she knew we didn't owe that eight thousand dollars. We've proven that, and we can still prove it. That eight thousand dollar bill that they created was in order to try and have our home declared uninhabitable for not having running water. We could prove that too, one hundred percent. That is no question. And the question here I have for Public Works is, from what I know for a fact, for ten years, the first ten years we lived here, our water was shut off, because I got paid just after the first. Our water got cut off, and it wouldn't get turned on until you paid the regular bill, water bill, and the twenty dollars and the two-dollar extra fee. So, how in the heck is it possible for us to build up an eight thousand dollar water bill? If you guys would just look at, and just look at the records, let us show you our records for ten years straight, solid that we paid, and it was turned on every month.
Thank you. Your time's expired, sir.
Three minutes is up?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. You guys have a good night. Just want you to understand what this is doing.
My name is Richard Williams, reside at one-one-two Nutmeg, Atwater. Lived there since nineteen eighty-five. I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for honoring the McDaniel family tonight. However, I feel that we can go a little bit further. I'd like to propose that the city take in consideration of naming... I'd like to propose that the city take in consideration of naming, renaming Atwater Community Center after Greg McDaniel. Um, I thought about maybe a park first, but then seeing how parks aren't maintained very well because of budgetary reasons, um, I think that would be a disservice in his honor. Um, Greg McDaniel, I've been associated with him since nineteen eighty-seven. I've served with him with a Atwater Youth Softball League, uh, Atwater Youth Baseball and Softball, along with Atwater Youth Football, also served on the Citizens Advisory Committee with him in ninety-four. Um, my wife has served twelve years with the city of, uh, Atwater Park and Rec Commission. She was a chair when Greg took over after she vacated the position. And I know that he's been involved with various groups throughout the city, and when you mentioned the number two zero nine three five eight two two six zero, it's even more popular than the City Hall. That's the number that you called for anything that was regarding to any event that was going on in the city of Atwater. I can't think of a better honor than to name the community center after him since it's a gathering place of all the youth and all the adults. And in his memory, he brought them all together throughout his career, or throughout his volunteerism throughout the years. So, um, on that note, I'd just like, he also served on the JPA, which, uh, he was able to ascertain the Castle Youth Authority, or Youth Center, along with the facilities surrounding, even made the football field. So, I don't mind asking for those to be renamed, because we want to still honor our veterans who reside in Cal-, uh, Atwater, who, uh, served at Castle. But I know they have rooms named after people in the community center, but I think all in all, the community center itself should be renamed Atwater Greg McDaniel Community Center. Thank you.
Great idea. Thank you. Sheriff?
Mr. Mayor, Madam City Manager, Council, I want to give you a little State of the Sheriff's Office address, thought, uh, like to bring you up to date because it's also your sheriff's office. Uh, we are currently, uh, fully staffed, we have actually two vacancies, but I've got like twelve people who are doing backgrounds on to fill those, so we'll have those taken care of in a short period of time. I'm also excited beyond belief at the promise of what's coming for the city of, uh, Atwater. Uh, my zip code is in Atwater, so I live a par five right outside of the city limits to our north, and it's very exciting to see what's coming down, and, uh, I'm looking forward to that. But I wanted to make a pledge to you publicly, that your sheriff and my agency are here to support you in anything that you need, for whatever things you do need. Most of you have my phone number, if you don't, you know how to get it. So, um, anyway, I congratulate you on this new year, and I look forward to the great things that are about to happen to this city. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Creighton, members of the City Council. So, um, I come before you as the former Atwater City Fire Chief and, um, Unit Chief for Madera Mariposa, Merced. I haven't had an opportunity to meet the new City Council members yet, but congratulations on your appointment. I wish I would have had an opportunity to work with you. Um, I've been here, uh, for seven and a half years, and during that seven and a half years, there, we've had a lot of challenges in the city of Atwater, but the one thing that I will say is that I'm very proud of the relationship that we've built here in the city. Um, I think that there's gonna be great things to come for the city, I hope that, uh, that relationship will continue with CAL FIRE. We have an acting unit chief, that will be Mike Van Loobensales, which some of you already know Mike, he's been in the county for quite a while. And you have your battalion chief, John Slate, so you'll still, still be seeing Mr. Slate. So, CAL FIRE has a really great team that's meant to be here to support you, to do what the city of Atwater needs, and I really want to thank you for the time that I was able to, um, be here in the city. I've promoted to the Assistant Region Chief, um, only one of four in the state of California, so I'm very proud of that, but I do say that with a very heavy heart, while it is a promotion, and that's really exciting, um, 'cause I made notes so I wouldn't get upset, but, um, it's very exciting to be promoted, but I really, um, I'm not quite ready to leave MMU, we're doing such amazing stuff here throughout the three counties and the cities that, um, I am involved with, and I think that's because of great people and great relationships, and I'm hoping that what I've learned from all of you is what I'm gonna be able to take to my new position and build up that in the whole southern part of the state of California. I'll have San Luis Obispo, Riverside, San Bernardino, and San Diego, so that's quite a lot bit bigger than MMU, but, um, certainly will not be as challenging or as rewarding as my seven and a half years here as your fire chief and, uh, unit chief for MMU. So, thank you so much for the support that you've given me over the years, and I hope that that will continue with the folks that come after me, and I look forward to seeing what great stuff Atwater's gonna be doing, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council, starting off two thousand nineteen with a, a bang, I hope. The reason I contacted you Lori and Chief Besseger was because of concerns I have about what's going on downtown with a certain individual. Um, we know we have a lack of officers, uh, and Chief Besseger has talked about the need for community-based policing. We can't expect an officer to be in the area twenty-four seven, we understand that, but the need to meet with the chief and/or the city manager to determine a strategy where all of us can work together is important. We know we have a lighting deficiency downtown, it's dark, it's uncomfortable. The plan I worked on with other committee members when we were the Redevelopment Advisory Board, the Downtown Redevelopment Advisory Board, um, did not call for that type of lighting. That wasn't what we picked, that wasn't what we wanted, our emphasis was on more lights, more lighting, brighter lighting, so downtown would be illuminated and much safer. But we can discuss that at a later date. Now we need to find a way to engage the businesses in the downtown area in a dialogue with city officials on what can be done today. I would encourage the city and the police department to work with the local citizens who have been impacted by this problem, to set a meeting date, start working on a plan, one that will inform officers of any encounters, and one that will find ways to increase lighting in our general areas. Brian has worked on getting LED bulbs in some of the fixtures, and that has made a difference. It's brightened things up a little bit, it's still not gonna be enough, but anything helps. Um, in my conversations with Scott McBride today, those poles can be, uh, either changed out to taller ones or modified to taller ones, and at some point in time, that will help as well. But more needs to be done, and I think as a businessman, um, if anybody has seen my building at night and seen the lighting in the overhang areas and around the back of my building, uh, it stands out. It shows pretty much every area without too much shadowing, so officers who are looking for someone will probably be able to see them. Uh, it runs me about twenty-three dollars a month to run those lights, normally I run them, uh, up to six hours a night at varying times. Um, nothing disturbs a bad guy more than a light coming on at two in the morning. Um, I'm re- I'm gonna refer to a handout in the time I have left, uh, I put these in back of the room, and it shows an individual who's well-known to Atwater, BB.
Your time's wrapped up, but go ahead and finish what you're working on.
Pardon?
Your time's expired, but go ahead and finish what you're gonna say.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, this was done by Marty Delgado, she has a business downtown. Um, she wrote a rather stern piece here, it's worth reading, about her interactions with this individual. Um, as of yet, I'm not gonna say they're, they're not that serious, because I think they're very serious. When my wife goes downtown to have her hair done, has to be escorted to her car in Atwater. Uh, last night, uh, or tonight, she had a dental appointment, and because of this individual hanging around Lee Plaza, where her dentist is, she had to be escorted out to her car again. That's Merced stuff, I think. I mean, that's what she went through when she went to Merced.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Okay, but I just want to, one more thing, Marty Delgados has had two, two hundred and fifty-six comments on this with three hundred and seventy-nine shares. It's a lot of people.
It is, spreading around town, so people are sharing that, so there are.
Yes, yeah, so, and I'll, and I'll, I'll be glad to talk to Bill about this, and, and anybody else that wants to form something, Lori and, and work on it, 'cause I think we, uh, we can get something done.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to come forward, please?
Frank Johnson, Modesto, California. Joseph continues to threaten frivolous lawsuits against the city for wrongful termination. His suit will be a joke considering his long history of unethical, incompetent, retaliatory, and criminal behavior. Any objective or reasonable city manager would have fired this miscreant a long time ago. Joseph proposed lawsuit reminds me of a burglar who slips and falls while burglarizing a house and then turns around and sues the homeowners. What is the world coming to? As they say, it's, the best offense is a strong offense. Have all the crimes that Joseph committed been forwarded to the new district attorney for a possible prosecution and/or possible Brady listing? Is the city fighting his unemployment claim on the basis of wrongful misconduct? I'm sure Joseph's father will be financing the suit, as no attorney would take such a, a dog of a case on a contingency, uh, basis. His father has been an enabler his whole life, what a fool's errand. Joseph will lose big time when the city moves for, for summary judgment. In the meantime, the city insurance can pick up the city's legal costs. Joseph got exactly what he deserved when he was fired. He'll probably be lucky if he can avoid jail or prison. I want to say Happy New Year to the Mayor, the Council, the citizens of Atwater. When you have a citizen in your city that has unlocked their heart and given their life as the gentleman that you gave that certificate to, and I use the term unlocked his heart, deserves a key. A name is one thing, but when you give a citizen a key, that makes them the city. That's an example of the city. That's one of the greatest gifts you could give anyone when they have given you the gift of their life. I want to urge the citizens of Atwater with disabilities to come to these meetings, enjoy the ability, the accessibility that now exists, the comfort. I want to thank the Mayor and the Council for the change that you have brought to this city, and again, Happy New Year. Did I make it in three minutes?
You did, ten seconds is better. Anyone else from the public like to come forward? Mayor Price?
Hey, thanks, Jim Price, uh, following Richard, I, I'm with Richard tonight. For those, uh, that were able to attend, uh, Greg's funeral this last weekend, what a great outpouring from this community. I, I was humbled by the whole thing, just watching that whole, uh, it, it was great. And I tell you, uh, Greg's older son, Jeff, missed his calling because that guy could be a comedy writer with no problems whatsoever. What, uh, he turned what was a very somber day into something that was very lighthearted and, uh, was really truly, um, the spirit that Greg was to this community. So, in that light, uh, I want to join with Richard tonight, only I'm a little bit different tonight. Um, you know, Greg's, one of his big, uh, contributions to this community was, uh, his dedication and his love for the Bloss House. And as I drove by the other day, and I kind of reflected on all the things that, uh, Greg has done to try to improve the, the appearance and what have you of, of the Bloss House, it, it suddenly struck me that across the street, um, there is a park, and it's Bloss Park, and, um, I know that Greg had, uh, ideas for that park, uh, to improve it and make it better. We stood together one day, uh, in the summer and looked out over it, and he, uh, and I exchanged conversation about that. Any case, my suggestion would be, and my request to the council is, to agendize, um, to rename the park Greg McDaniel Memorial Park, and I think in light of what Richard has brought up, perhaps maybe put the two together and agendize them for discussion and action, uh, at the next council meeting, but I think that, uh, having Greg McDaniel Memorial Park adjacent to Bloss, uh, home, I think would be a lasting and fitting tribute, uh, to this very, very good man and a very close friend of mine. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else from the public like to come forward?
Danny Hernandez, in Atwater. About a week from today, Sam Joseph was removed from this department, from the Chief of Police here by, uh, the city manager at the time. Because of the time limited here, I'm gonna go right to what I have discovered. A lot of people have come up here trying to figure out why this man was removed by liary work. And what I'm gonna tell you now, citizens of this city have stepped up to let me know what they have found. Number one, never mind all these meetings you had at the Almond Tree and all this other stuff, you know, this, as far as this council is concerned, right around the middle of, of this year in, in May, it was given to me the information that Mr. Matt Viera was arrested down in Fresno at Clovis, to be precise. Now, under the freedom of information, which I was given the instruction by the Merced County District Attorney, I went down there and got this report, and this report is a disgrace to this individual, and because when he returned, moving up to that time, there was a, they were gonna fire him. Frank Petro, along with Lieutenant Joseph, and the interference came in from a source that was a councilman here before, Andy Klotite. He didn't want him fired because he was gonna marry his daughter. Now, I don't think that there isn't anybody that has any right to go into any police department and try to get somebody off from getting fired by this city. You don't have any right to go into the PD and do that. Furthermore, on October seventeen, we had another interference. There had been a, a, a shooting over here by the high school, and, and, uh, went away, and the next thing you know, two officers are unavailable because they have to follow up and can, continue to make the report of the incident. We have one, Ms. Viera, calling Mr. Bramble to have the chief remove her son from a shift because they were shorthanded on the PD. I don't see this business with any councilman mean one of these things, you know, that you can just go in and ask for, for whatever the hell it is because your son can't take care of whatever the, whatever the heck it is. And this is, this is something that is bad. And all of this time, people came up here trying to find out what in the world happened that Sam got removed, you claimed that you didn't know, and yet, the last meeting I had with one of these persons up there in your, in your, in this council, they said, oh, we still have other things that, that, you know, we're looking into. What the hell, you've been doing this for a year, and you finally, you finally terminated him. He's gonna come back, and I'm gonna make sure he comes back, and the citizens of this city have to know, call me up and let me know, you know, I will tell you what we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time?
My name's Janice Tabor, I live on Elm Avenue.
Pull the microphone down, thank you.
I was trying to be taller. Um, I'm not really comfortable being up here speaking, but.
Take your time, take a deep breath.
I live in the neighborhood where George Dominguez frequents. I live in the neighborhood where George Dominguez frequents. I've called the police on him two or three times. I've had dog sitters at my house call the cops on him a couple of times. He likes to intimidate. He'll hang out out front of my window. I've been late to work. I didn't know that this was a problem outside of me, and I saw this post the other day, and I thought, wow, it's not just me. I saw that women are afraid who work at the post office, who work at the gas station, at nail salons in the area. And I was just hoping that maybe something will be done about him because it seems like he's gone, he's back, he's gone, he's back. And I'm afraid to do my yard. He's very intimidating. He'll stand there, he'll stare at you, he'll approach you, and hearing about him forcing himself on people is, it's just very scary. So, I'm glad this was brought to your attention, and I just thought I'd come here and say that this is real, and we are scared.
It is. It's not on the agenda, but I want to say something regarding that. I think what Mr. Lee and some other members of the community have expressed almost a week ago what's going on. So, our police chief and police department are aware of it, and they're working on a plan to address this, but specifics I don't have for you right now, but we'll have our police chief get back to you.
She wants to speak with Sergeant Mefeski.
Okay.
He's up to date.
Yeah. So, we hear what you're saying, and we're actively participating.
Okay. Thank you.
It's important. Thank you. Any other members of the public that could come forward this time? Seeing none. Public comments closed. Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If decision is requested on an item that may, that item will be removed for consideration on a separate action. Do any council members want to discuss any item? Seeing none. Motion by a council member for the approval of the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as is.
Councilman Viera makes a motion to approve. Any second?
Second, ma'am.
Ambries, second's motion. Call for the question. Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Reports and presentation from staff. Water quality report. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, with the 123 TCP issues we're having in the city, we're required by the state to put out a quarterly letter on where we're at. Right now, we have two wells that are not contaminated. One doesn't have any. The other, we changed over from DBCP to the 123 TCP filtration, and it's coming out as a zero. I'm in the process right now of getting an RFP to go out for design and build for Well 20. We drilled a new hole there, and we're waiting just for the filtration to get it all hooked up. We're scheduled to go to court this year to find out if we're going to get a settlement from Dow and Shell so we can get the monies to proceed to do all the rest of the wells. And I also want to make it clear that the TCP and the 218 are two separate issues. Some people think that we're going to raise the rates to do the TCP. That's not correct. That's, the 218 is to maintain just normal operation and maintenance, capital improvements, things like that. The settlement for the TCP, if we do get it, can only be used for the removal and operation maintenance for that facilities. 218 also is for infrastructure improvements, or if we have any catastrophic failures, where we can repair any mains that are damaged, outdated.
When was the last time we did any major water line replacement in this city? How long have you been here?
Twenty-one years.
How many times have we ever done it in those 21 years?
There's been a few. We did some in front of the water tower down Cedar. We put in all C900 in that. There's been a few other ones that we've done. Off the top of my head, I can't...
It's been a long time, is what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Neglect and disrepair. Yeah, and the wells that have gone out of service, as the city manager said, and there's other costly issues, regulatory, sampling, staffing.
Yes, all that. Yeah. And then also, for the 218 also, is we need to do, we need to keep up on doing homeland security assessments for door locks, cameras, alarm systems, to make sure we don't have any break-ins at the well sites or our facilities that have...
Secure our drinking water. Did you have anything else for Public Works while you're on the agenda?
Pardon?
Did you have anything else from Public Works you wanted to bring up?
Brian, maybe you can talk about, recently, we had to reset the key codes and the state of the doors that need to be addressed immediately.
Yeah, that's, I was going to get that. That's one of the part of the homeland security to where we have, on the doors, we have the keypad, and they're not designed to change the codes as often as we have been changing them when people leave. So, we're looking also to try to get monies to replace all that system, the whole system, to a, be like a swipe card, some of that natured where it's all hooked up to computers, to where you can...
Track access to...
Where you can track access, and you can delete the card. If the people leave and they don't give it back, we can, you know, just delete them out of the system.
Does anybody from the public want to come forward, speak anything? No comments from the public?
Mary Ann doesn't have a question.
Council, I'll bring it back to you. Thank you, Mr. Raymond. City Council Matters. What? No. What? Brian, 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 Brian. You guys could look like brothers. City Council Matters. Appointment of one board member to scheduled vacancy on the Merced County mosquito abatement district board of trustees for a four-year term ending December 22, 2022. We had done interviews already for this position back January 10th, or no, December 10th, was it? What day was that? December 10th. And when we appointed Mr. Kale and the council, we did that the same night. Mike Nelson was the candidate that was selected for that, so we're going to be appointing Mike Nelson as our mosquito abatement trustee. So, we, do we need to open it up to the public? This time, we'll open it up to the public. Seeing none, closed. Need a motion from the council?
I move to accept it.
Kale makes a motion to accept Mike, to appoint Mike Nelson to the board of trustees mosquito abatement. Second?
Second.
Second by Cindy Viera. Call for the question. Kale?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Nelson, you're in. City Council Reorganization, Mayor's Committee and Mayor's Committee Assignments. Give me a minute to find it. Do you know how to print it out for me? Yeah, there it is. Not yet. Okay, so, this is where the part comes in. The committee assignments, we're going to go with those first, then we'll talk about the reorganization. From Mayor Pro Tem all the way down to the One Voice or Fourth of July Committee, I'm going to read through these to the council members. These are the people I selected for these committee positions, but I'm looking for your advice, if you want to be on that, if you don't want to be on it. But I tried to balance everything out fairly to where the majority, everybody had five apiece, five committees. So, I'll go through with it, and I guess we can share this. So, the first, and this is not in any ranking or order of importance, it's just, we took the continuation, what the previous councils have always done, and had to add some new ones for the water conservation, other stuff mandated by the state. So, I'll go through the first one, and we'll just go one by one, and if anybody wants discussion on it, just let me know that we can talk about it, maybe you're passionate about it or you're not. So, Mayor Pro Tem, Brian Raymond. Merced County Association of Governments, Paul Creighton, and one alternate, Brian Raymond. League of California Cities, Valley Division, Cindy Viera, John Kale and Danny Ambries, one voting delegate and two alternates. City Audit and Finance Committee, Cindy Viera and Danny Ambries, two representatives. Lafca, one representative, Paul Creighton. USP, Atwater Community Liaison Group, that's the penitentiary, Paul Creighton, Brian Raymond. Atwater Community Services, Neighborhood Watch, one representative, Danny Ambries, and one alternate, John Kale. Fourth of July Committee, one representative, Paul Creighton. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, John Kale and Cindy Viera, one representative, one alternate. Sigma, which is a groundwater management, one representative, one alternate, Paul Creighton and John Kale. Irwin, that's another water management program for the state, one representative, one alternate, Paul Creighton and Danny Ambries. The H Train, one representative, one alternate, Paul Creighton, Danny Ambries. One Voice, one representative, one alternate, Paul Creighton, Brian Raymond. The Bloss House, two representatives, Paul Creighton and Danny, or Brian Raymond. I repeat that, the Bloss House is two representatives, Paul Creighton and Brian Raymond. The Christmas Parade, Paul Creighton, Cindy Viera. Council, have any questions on that? Do we need a motion to approve that? So, council?
I make a motion that we approve the 2019 City Council Committee Assignments as...
Presented?
Presented by the mayor.
So...
I'm going to be ratifying your...
So, this would be for ratifying the appointments presented. Second by...
I'll second.
Motion by Viera, second by Kale. Call for questions. Ambries?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then the reorganization. I want to talk about what we've, we've done a few improvements in here. We just painted, and we're doing our best to present a new, a new fresh face. I want to realign how people are sitting up here on the dais. And yes, with the recent departure of our city clerk, who is doing a great job up to this point, but he's going to pursue other things in life at this time, it's going to be a hard, hard position to fill. Don did a great job. But with that, I'd like to reorganize the council the way we sit. I want to move the city attorney closer, and then bring the Mayor Pro Tem where the city attorney's at now, and that's my only modification on the council. And then whoever ends up, whoever ends up being the next city clerk, or however we have to deal with that, we have a staff table over there where we want to go to speaker cards, which is what the trend is today with all the other municipalities. So, if you want to do public comment, you go get a speaker card from the clerk, come to the podium, and address the podium, the council from there. So, those are the immediate changes. I apologize for the stopwatch clock thing over there not working, but it's set at five minutes, and nobody knows how to reset it, so go figure. So, with those, I'm looking for discussion from you guys. I don't want to impose anything on you. I want to have, as part of the team, we talk about it. Those are my ideas. Do you guys have any different ideas or concerns moving forward? Ms. Viera?
I do want to kind of comment with you. I think Don did a great job, and he will be missed. He's a really nice guy, so that's...
He will be missed because he's great at what he does. Danny, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I do not.
John?
No.
Okay, so, we'll be seeing some changes at the next council meeting. And staff did a great job. They came in and cleaned this up, and they're really just trying to put on a new face for the city to show that positive progress is happening, and we're doing it for minimal dollars. So...
I do think Public Works...
Yeah, the Public Works team came out, and they attacked this thing pretty quick, and they did a phenomenal job. They repaired a bunch of things around here. We're going to be adding some new lighting in the chambers because these are old fluorescent lights, and the ballasts are out, and the bulbs are out, so just the cost for electrician to replace two of the ballasts and all the light bulbs, it's cheaper to buy a retro LED kit to go up there, so we'll be saving money on that and also brightening it up a little bit in here. So, do we need a, we don't need approval on that, do we?
It was just for discussion, right?
City Council Comments. This is where you get to make a comment at the end of the night. Anything that we forgot or you wanted to bring up to the public? So, we'll start with Mr. Kale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just say thank you to the board, the city council, for their nomination of me sitting in this chair. It's different. It's very different sitting out here looking at everybody, looking at you. It's a lot easier sitting out there, I can tell you that. But thank you guys for what you're doing. I want to say that literacy program is very neat. I think it will do our children wonderful, and I look forward to working with you guys in the next two years, and I think we're going to do great things. Like Sheriff Hornke said, we're going to do great things.
Ms. Viera?
Yeah, I just want to say that, Brian, I hope he's feeling better. We miss having him here tonight. Well, the majority of us travel to Sacramento for a couple days for League of Cities training this week, where we meet other city council members, learn from them, learn about new legislation, new laws, new rules. Also, kind of to piggyback on the loss of Greg McDaniel, he truly was an exceptional member of our community. All my, all my boys played Pop Warner football, and he was, you know, always there, the face that we saw whenever we, whenever we brought the boys. He was, you know, making sure the refs were there and getting the kids going, and making sure that the ambulance was there if someone got hurt, and Pinky was taking care of the, getting people in, and, you know, they were just kind of family members to all of us, watched our kids grow up, making sure that they had, you know, a good, a good solid program, and making sure it was safe. So, Greg will be truly, truly missed. So, thank you for the community members that acknowledge that and bring the suggestions here to us. I know it's something that had already been on my mind and on my heart, as well as other members here. I think Cory and I had talked about it as well. So, that's something that I think, moving forward, that we'll probably see happening. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and Lori, for her great taste and all the beautiful colors. It is nice to come in and see a nice, fresh, clean look. Looking forward to an exciting new year. Thank you.
Ms. Ambries?
Just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Also, the place looks wonderful. Now I know exactly which camera to look into, since we only have the one here. My heart is out there to Greg McDaniel's family as well, and I hope we can do something in order to honor him. And that's, that's it.
I think Chuck, your idea, awesome. I think it's... I think it's permanent. Or Richard? Sorry about that. I was just reading Chuck Blach. I think that you're right. It's a permanent thing. It won't fluctuate or stay the same. I think that's words of wisdom right there. We'll definitely bring that back for discussion in the council and try to get that done right away. At least that'll be my goal. Attending Greg's funeral, Queen was played by the, the kids, and he had the whole church going, and I just, I think that was pretty cool. It was, it was the best, best atmosphere I've ever been to for a funeral, and that's what Greg's about, was he brought the whole congregation together that day, and it was really positive. It was what I embody up here, and I want to see move forward. So, we're going to miss that guy, miss him a lot. And there's a lot of people out there that work side by side with him, and there's going to be a big void there, so we'll all pull in and pitch in and help everybody. Greg is Mr., he always will be Mr. Atwater. So, those of you that knew him, you're lucky. If you never got to meet him, you missed a great person. So, also talking about the, the camera setup, we've, we've reduced it down to one camera for just a little bit easier. We're going to try to mount that up on the, the wall, either the corner, wherever, we'll work with our camera crew where the best angle is. We're trying to just come in and do the business of the people, keep it simple, and move these, these meetings through and forward efficiently, and, and be productive. So, that's the intention, that's the only intention we have, and I really do appreciate staff's help in cleaning the place up a little bit, and look for some continual changes throughout the city. The, the parks, they're, they're working on falling some trees over by the Bloss House. We have some lights out in front of the, the old carriage lights. We're working on getting those replaced, so there's a lot of good things happening that aren't going to cost too much. We're going to clean up, sweep, and polish some things up for the city. So, with that, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Chuck Blach, Angelina Mancibo, and Mr. Atwater Greg McDaniel. So, thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.